Really helped put this together and as Chairman, I'm glad to push it over the top. Ask for an eye, vote for this very important, very important measure. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge, for your leadership and Ms. Perry. And this is the second reading, so Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Congratulations.
Hold on.
Thank you.
I asked the fourth with on this. Send it to the Mayor right away.
And joining us now is Kevin Regan, Assistant General Manager of the Department of Recreation and Parks. Mr. Regan, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Well, thank you for asking me to be here. I really appreciate it.
It seems like more and more restrictions are being placed on smokers almost everywhere now in city parks. What's the reason for this particular ban? By the way, first things first, how many parks are there?
Well, currently in the City of Los Angeles, we have 398 parks throughout the city. And this new ordinance will ban smoking curb to curb in all of those parks, in every city park in Los Angeles.
Parks, of course, not the only places where there's a ban on smoking. What are some of the other areas in the city that have similar bans?
Well, there's currently a ban on smoking on public beaches. There are bans on smoking in all public buildings, city buildings. And there's also bans in the City of Los Angeles on smoking indoors in any restaurant.
We have a lot of visitors to the greater Los Angeles area. How would visitors here, tourists, or for that matter even residents of the city be made aware that it's no longer okay to smoke in parks, or for example, as you mentioned, at the beach?
Well, the ordinance speaks about that. And the Parks Department will be putting up signs. And the signs will go into every park. And the signs will be at central locations where people would see them as they either enter the park or as they're participating in activities in the park. And the signs will have international symbol with the typical circle with the red slash with the cigarette in it, so that everyone can see that. And the signs will very clearly state that there is no smoking anywhere within the park, either in the outdoor areas, or in the gymnasium, anywhere in the park, there will be no smoking whatsoever.
As long as you're putting those signs up, could you put one up with a cellphone and a slash through it as well?
I'm not sure we can, I'm not sure we have that one yet. It sounds good, though.
With all these restrictions in place, are there any public areas within the city where it still is okay to smoke?
Well, I'm not totally sure of exactly where it is legal or not legal to smoke everywhere in the city, but I can say in most outdoor areas, I think it's legal to smoke. I mean, I'm sure you can smoke as you're walking down the street, or at your home, or in your front yard. I'm not sure, you know, it's funny that you asked that question. I was in a park the other day, and I saw a person in the park who was smoking. And they actually saw me that I was there with some other staff members, and they came up and said, hey, I heard smoking's going to be banned. Where can I smoke? And we said, well, you know, not in the park, but out on the street is okay. And the person said, well, I'm thinking about quitting, because there's just nowhere else we can smoke anymore in L.A. And so, maybe it's a good thing. I mean, smoking isn't really good for your health.
That's true. Maybe go to your doctor's office and smoke or something, but you're right, it's not a good idea at all. Now, this obviously isn't a capital offense. Is it a misdemeanor, a felony? What level of infraction would this be?
Well, the way that the ordinance is written is that the first offense is an infraction. So it's a very minor offense. It does carry a fine if the individual was to be ticketed. But really, what happens with the actual offenders is kind of up to the courts. I mean, there's a variety of ways that the judge could determine to handle that. So I know that the first offense is an infraction, and from there on, second and third offense, you know, it obviously goes up in severity.
Sounds like this is certainly going to be, shall we say, labor-intensive in terms of enforcement, at least in the beginning. Who's responsible for enforcement of this new ordinance? Park Rangers, police? Somebody's bound to ask the question. Aren't there more important things to do for law enforcement?
Well, I think with an ordinance like this, law enforcement getting involved in this particular issue is probably going to be kind of like a last resort. With these types of ordinances, this is very much like littering. I mean, everyone knows you're not supposed to litter in a public park. There's signs up that speak to the municipal code that prohibits littering. And so, we're looking at self-enforcement. We're looking at folks who use the park, understanding that there's a new law, seeing the signs, and just following the law. It's kind of like a self-enforcement, self-responsibility. If for some reason someone is smoking, and it becomes a real problem, and it gets reported, then law enforcement certainly would respond and issue a ticket. And of course, you know, we don't call the police every time someone throws a piece of trash on the ground. Maybe we should, but you're right, the police just don't, they have very important calls to handle. And I think that this would probably be a response that they would do only if called.
If I'm reading between the lines of what you just said, you're hoping that peer pressure might be a pretty strong influence here?
Well, I think what happens with any situation like this is that people, you know, the average person, most people are law-abiding. And when they realize that there's a new law that's been passed, and there's a sign that speaks to the actual municipal code section, most people, you know, obey the law. And so, what we've seen is that, actually, in case you didn't know, there has been, for the last several years, a ordinance that prohibits smoking anywhere near a children's play area. And we've had signs up in the parks regarding that. And we found that most folks see the sign, and they follow the law.
That's a very good point. Certainly, Los Angeles is not the only municipality where smoking is banned under certain circumstances, certain places. Can you give us some ideas about some of the other places that have taken similar measures?
Well, we did do a small survey of a number of cities in Southern California. And we did find that a number of cities, places like Glendale, Burbank, Santa Monica, some other cities, Santa Barbara, are either already enacted no-smoking ordinances in their parks, or we're looking at doing the same thing. So it is becoming a very common thing for cities to have a ban on smoking in public parks. And I think that folks who utilize the parks, you know, are really asking for it as well, because, are asking for the ban, I mean, because they're out, they're exercising, they're doing healthy activities in the park. And to have people smoking in the park is just not a healthy thing when people are trying to exercise.
An ordinance like this, which was sent forth to the Mayor's office, when would this officially take effect?
Well, typically, an ordinance like this would go into effect about 30 days after the Mayor actually signs the ordinance. So the ordinance just went through council yesterday. So as soon as the Mayor signs it, I'd say maybe within 30 days after that.
This really isn't going after smokers, and it's not like we're about to put a huge no-smoking sign at the state line. Really, this is a matter of public health, and I presume also, as a matter of fact, is a matter of public safety, because of course, this is an extremely dry summer.
That's correct. And I think that the council is really looking at the fact that this is a public health issue. Again, as I stated a few minutes ago, when people come to public parks, they often come to engage in a physical activity. They're either going to jog, or participate in sports, or do any number of activities. And a lot of the people who come to parks are bringing children. We have a lot of senior citizens, many of whom have health problems and concerns already. And secondhand smoke is a very hazardous substance to be in the air around people who are breathing deeply during physical activity, and particularly around our children, seniors, people with health concerns. So I think it's very prudent, and very wise, and very healthy to say, look, when you come to a public park, this is a place where families, where groups are going to engage in healthy activities. You know, we're not only looking at smoking, but we've also looked at the types of foods that are served in our programs as well. And the city has adopted a zero-trans-fat policy as well.
You mentioned family, recreation, kids, lots of things to do. What are some of the other things that you have going on? It's a great summer, the weather's terrific.
It's been a great summer. It's been a really active summer for the Parks Department. One of the biggest programs that we operate here in L.A. City Rec and Parks during the summer is our Summer Day Camp, where we have, on any given day, somewhere in the neighborhood of 70,000 children participating in day camp across the city. And these are activities where kids are able to do swimming, arts and crafts, they go on field trips to places like Disneyland, Knott's Berry Farm. So it's a great program. We also have all of our pools. We have over 60 pools in the City of Los Angeles system. And those pools are all up and running. We have junior lifeguard programs. We have swim lessons, family swim lessons, all different types of activities for folks to partake. We also have summer basketball leagues. We have the Summer Sports Academy that takes place out at Hanson Dam, where we teach kids special skills about soccer, and softball, and other activities. So there's a lot of things happening. And anyone who wants further information could look at the department's website at laparks.com.
Also, you kind of tripped right on by it, but there are actually some employment opportunities, and even for kids.
Absolutely. We're always looking for Summer Day Camp counselors, for our resident camp counselors, and we're also always looking for lifeguards. So again, the website is a good place for folks to go if they're interested in job opportunities for the summer.
By the way, speaking of summer, how long is summer? In other words, how long do the pools, for example, stay open? How long does the lifeguard program go this year?
Well, our pools open in late June, and they close on the Labor Day weekend. So this year, though, we're looking at possibly extending the season for a week or so. So they may stay open a little bit longer.
That sounds great. A terrific summer, and lots to do. Assistant General Manager of the Department of Recreation and Parks, Kevin Regan, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thanks for having me. Appreciate it.
Your Los Angeles City Council, in a unanimous vote, approved the ordinance that would ban smoking in all city parks. We'll now go to the Mayor for his approval. L.A. City View is the government-access capable channel for the City of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings, and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at 213-473-3978. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending August 3, 2007. On behalf of Reggie Parks and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review. Driver, over here. Sir, remove your shoes. Sir, remove your shoes and stand here. You have to focus when crossing a street. Every day, pedestrians are seriously injured, or even killed, because they're not paying attention when they cross, or because drivers fail to yield. A pedestrian always has the right of way. Pay attention, obey the law, or deal with the consequences. Look before you cross. Cars can't see you.
Need a recycling center? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall. Illegally parked cars? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Reyna, where?
Mosquera.
Mosquera?
Mosquera.
Mosquera. You're the queen. And her?
Joanna.
Joanna. Reynosa, you're the princess.
Um, go ahead and run. Okay, great. Well, our first presentation today is Mr. Huizar from the 14th Council District.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And Madam President and council members in public, I'm really happy today to be standing with representatives of the Ecuador community here in Los Angeles.
Excuse me for one minute, Mr. Huizar. We can have a bit of quiet in the chamber so that we can hear the presentation. I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'm really happy to be standing here with Reyna Masquera, the queen of the events this year. She is the queen for the Ecuadorians. And also with us is Princess Joanna Reynosa. I wanted to mention that here in Los Angeles, we have over 200,000 Ecuadorians or descendants of Ecuadorians living around the Southern California region. There are over 20 clubs and organizations that have been created to assist these residents to better adapt to the culture of their new home and also to promote and preserve their culture from where they came. El Comité de Fiesta Patrias Ecuadorianas is responsible for organizing and leading these clubs. El Comité began as a committee that organized an annual celebration for Ecuadorian Independence Day here in Los Angeles. And today, this year, we are celebrating the 198th anniversary of the independence of Ecuador. To celebrate that, this week, they will have a community mass, a grand parade on Broadway Street here in downtown Los Angeles that begins at 9:30 on 11th Street and Broadway. They will also have music and a festival at Olvera Street right after the parade here Sunday at Olvera Street. So I'd like to encourage everyone to attend. And here in Los Angeles, we often celebrate our diversity. This is one more community who we are proud to recognize, to announce, and to celebrate their contributions to the city of Los Angeles. So ladies and gentlemen, let's give El Comité a big round of applause and our princess and queen for this year. Congratulations. So with that, let me introduce to you Manolo Cevallos, President of El Comité. I want to thank Mr. Cevallos for all the work he does in giving of his free time and his volunteerism to El Comité, who is very active here in Los Angeles. Mr. Cevallos.
Thank you, Consejal Huizar. Thanks, honor. It is a great proud for us to be here. We have the leadership here. We have the first citizen of Ecuador in L.A., Consul Eddie Vedon. We have Elba Berros, who was the founder of these festivities since 10 years ago. We can tell you, the Ecuadorians we have around, even if it is a small community, we have over than 3,000 business owners helping to develop the economical issues in the city of Los Angeles. We have to thank you, all of you, because you are supporting our festivales. And thanks to Consejal José Huizar, who was the scenario already by the committee to be the grand marshal in our parade. Now I'm going to introduce our first person in Los Angeles, the Consul General of Ecuador, Mr. Eddie Vedon.
Señor don Antonio Villarigosa, alcalde de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Señor consejal José Huizar. Señores miembros del distinguido consejo edilicio de la ciudad de Los Ángeles.
Mr. Mayor Antonio Villarigosa, Mr. Councilman Huizar, and the rest of the council people here in the city of Los Angeles.
Compatriotas ecuatorianos, señoras, señores, distinguidos amigos.
Distinguished friends, colleagues from the Ecuador, ladies and gentlemen. On August the 10th, 1909, they have their affirmation and their sacrifice on August 2nd, 1910. The law came through with the foundation of a country that you have to love each other with blood. This is what occurred with the massacre that occurred on August 2nd to 1910. And as a matter of fact, following Quito's example. On April 18th of 1910. Caracas launched its yell of independence. And on May 25th, Buenos Aires revolted. Bogotá did it on July 20th. And Santiago de Chile, the 18th of the same month. All of America was up in flames. Whose original spark began from the painful chest of the sons of Quito. The resolution taken by a few patriots of being a freedom. And to achieve the freedom of their country. Those impulsed to give the first yell of independence in the Americas. This Americanism movement was headed by that extraordinary man. A sociologist and humanitarian. Who gave birth to the intellectual world of the 18th. Eugenio Espejo. Eugenio Espejo with this influence assisted in taking this first step for the independence of humanity in the Americas. And his wishes became a reality on August the 10th of 1809. This great movement provoked the Spanish government also to follow steps. Quito, chosen by many politics and due to the statistics, it achieved the great name of Quito Luz de América. This Quito, chosen by many politics and due to the statistics, it achieved the great name of Quito Luz de América. That the flag of liberty and freedom of August the 10th of 1809. Flamed as a supervivency of the spirit of our Ecuadorian people. May it fly like the survival of the whole Ecuadorian community. And of the heroes who on this date wrote. Una página de las glorias de nuestra historia. One more page of the history of our country. Señoras, señores. Ladies and gentlemen.
Just a few words from Elba Berros, who was the founder of these festivales.
Council members, please, we would like to thank to you, each one of you. Invite you Sunday for the Ecuadorian parade. Many of you have been with us. Ms. Jan Perry always with us. Especially you being with us too, Jenny Sanz. Will you please, each one of you, please come to Sunday at 9 o'clock on Broadway and Nani. I don't see Eddie Garcetti here either. Special thanks this year to José Huizar, who has helped us to represent the Ecuadorian culture in this country, and especially this coming Sunday at the Broadway for our parade. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Again, this Sunday, 9:30 on Broadway and 11th Street. Hopefully, we could come out and support and celebrate the Ecuadorian culture. And so, to El Comité de Fiesta Patrias Ecuadorianas, I present to you this certificate by all of the city council, our mayor. Thank you so much for your contributions to the city of Los Angeles, and we look forward to a successful weekend. Thank you so much.
And Mr. Huizar, before you finish, Mr. Rosendahl has pressed his button and would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to acknowledge my Ecuadorian friends. I had the pleasure of being in that great country. One of my most remarkable experiences was in Baños. And what an incredible city that is. I had a fabulous time in, of course, Quito, Ecuador, and other cities in your great nation. And I just want to acknowledge you and put a shout out and say, God bless the Ecuadorian community in America. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Perry for her next presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And it is a great pleasure for me to recognize a group called Remo Inc. Remo Inc. was established over 50 years ago and has successfully grown into the largest drumhead company in the world. With their continuing success, they felt it was important to share their love for music with the community, which is why in 2003, they founded the Remo Recreational Music Center. The Music Center was created to provide an atmosphere where people from all walks of life, of all ages, with or without musical background, could go and experience music in a welcoming and friendly environment. Noticing the positive effect that this music was having on children, they felt that it was important to do more. In their efforts to reach out to kids, Remo decided to co-sponsor Drum Downtown, a free community drum circle held the first Saturday of each month from May to September at the Music Center Plaza. Drum Downtown is a great event that showcases the power of rhythm to unify children from Los Angeles' most ethnically diverse communities. In addition to Drum Downtown, Remo Inc. has been sponsoring 25 drum workshops for children during their summer camps at various recreation and park centers throughout our city. The children at each center are taught a culturally specific drum pattern and then have an opportunity to perform their composition onstage with drumming legends at one of three free concerts that Remo Inc. is staging this summer. So I wanted to say thank you and applaud their efforts for positively impacting the lives of our young people through music. It's refreshing to know that there are businesses out there in the community that think beyond the profit margin and think about what they can do to take their success and make a difference in the lives of others. And I hope that Remo Incorporated serves as a symbol and a leader of good example that other businesses can follow in their footsteps and lift up the quality of life for children throughout the entire city. And with that, I'd like to introduce, and it's also their 50th anniversary this year, I'd like to introduce Chris Hart, who's a marketing promotions manager for Remo Inc., Sue Kincaid, marketing and media manager for Remo Inc., and Jerry Gomez, principal from Spasmatic Advertising. Okay. All right, very good. And if somebody would, one of you would like to say a few words.
Yes, thank you very much, Councilwoman Perry and council members. As a tribute to Remo's golden anniversary of operation in Los Angeles, beginning July 12 and continuing through August 22, Remo, in partnership with L.A.'s Department of Recreation and Parks, will sponsor a series of weekly drumming workshops with urban youths from five city rec. centers. The kids aging in range from 8 to 14 and totaling roughly about 35 will form a drum circle ensemble as part of their summer camp program. Each group will be taught a culturally specific drum performance, including African, Asian, Middle Eastern, Latin, Brazilian, and in the process, learn about the similarities of diverse cultures, a perfect metaphor for the city of Los Angeles. The kids will then perform their composition side by side with their instructors, Remo master percussionists, at one of three community drum days concerts on consecutive Saturdays in August, starting tomorrow at Hollenbeck Park Bandshell. They will join headline performers like Grammy Award-winning master conguero Poncho Sanchez, djembe master Leon Mobley, and in the process, experience the pride and joy of performing for their community. Drum Days L.A. is a gift to the city and people of Los Angeles. It's a celebration of the joy and magic of music-making and of drumming. It's Remo's way of saying thanks for making this marvelous city our home for the past 50 years. We want to take this opportunity to invite all council members and the general public here today and watching at home to join us in the celebration of community drumming. The day's events are as follows. And these are free concerts. They start at 1:00 p.m. and last till 5:00 p.m. On Saturday, August 11th, at Hollenbeck Park Bandshell, 1:00 p.m. is Suhal Casper and the Suhal Casper Near East Music Ensemble. 2:00 p.m. are the Community Center Camp Kids from Hollenbeck, performing a Middle Eastern composition. At 2:30 p.m., Poncho Sanchez's Latin Jazz Band. At 4:00 p.m., a community drum circle. On Saturday, August 18th, at Sycamore Grove Park Bandshell, 1:00 p.m., the Alpine Community Center Camp Kids will perform a Taiko composition. 1:30 will be Taiko drumming with On Ensemble. At 2:30, the Cypress Kids will perform a Latin composition. At 3:00 p.m., Poncho Sanchez's Latin Jazz Band will take the stage. At 4:00 p.m., another community drum circle. And culminating on Saturday, August 25th, at the South Park Bandshell, 1:00 p.m., the South Park Community Center Camp Kids will perform a Brazilian composition. At 1:30, performer Linda Udine and Vivier Brazil will perform. At 2:30, the Nickerson Gardens children will perform an African composition. At 3:00 p.m., Leon Mobley and Delion will perform. At 4:00 p.m., there'll be a community drum circle. Thank you very much for your time. Hope to see you there. And we're very privileged with this honor from the city.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I hope all of you will come out, support the kids, and support Remo Inc.
And we have one of our colleagues, Mr. Reyes, who'd like to say something.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to congratulate my colleague Jan Perry and the organization. When you put it in perspective, 50% of our kids are not graduating from high school. And that is a stark number when it comes to the future of this city, of this economy, this country. So everything you're doing to instill discipline, art, through music, adds to our ability to keep them in school, create that focus, and hopefully into higher education. So thank you for that, because I just think it's important. When people listen to this, wow, a bunch of kids beating on drums. No, it's about instilling a skill set that talks about direction, discipline, and hopefully leads them to a higher path of learning. So thank you very much for everything you do.
Thank you. And Ms. Perry, I'd like to add, you know, Remo's drums on Coldwater and my district there. And I know on Saturdays, you have free drum there. I know a lot of my friends' children go there. And you've been supportive of the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association during the holidays. I have climbed up to the top, to the really big drum, and been up there. There's actually some pictures, not of me going up, thank goodness, but of me actually. So I just appreciate what you've done, as Mr. Reyes and Ms. Perry have said, bringing music to our kids and letting them know that this is an active part of their life and an important part, and ways in which we can help them to choose the right path. And so thank you for doing this throughout the city of Los Angeles and in my district as well. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Our next presentation, Mr. Reyes.
Let's put the young ones in front so they can see them in their full... Right here. They can see you in your great outfit. Good morning, council. It's real privilege to be here, presenting this great organization. In my district, we have this incredible tradition where you have celebrations that reflect a great culture, great diversity. We have Fiesta Patrias at Lincoln Park. We have Veterans Day at Cypress Park Memorial. We have Fiesta Agustina, reflecting the Salvadoran Central American traditions. And just this past year, together with Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Garcetti, Councilmember Labarnes, and Councilmember Wesson, we put together Family Month, festival that will highlight the family. And the whole month is dedicated to all the great events happening, the African-American marketplace, the cultural fair, the Ale Greek Festival, which is the focus of this presentation, the Ale Korean Festival, Mexican Independence Celebration, Thai Cultural Festival, and the Presses Cheese Italian Fiesta St. Gennaro, presented for reflection of the great Italian traditions in Los Angeles. Today is an opportunity to highlight the Ale Greek Festival, passport to a Grecian holiday. It's a signature cultural event of the Byzantine Latino corridor neighborhood and has quickly become one of the prominent festivals in the city of Los Angeles. This great tradition has embraced a great saying, "We are all angels with one wing. We can only fly by embracing each other." And embrace they have. They have embraced the Latino influence in this corridor. They have gathered a great amount of resources in the private and public sector to do great improvements, working with the various city programs to improve Pico Union, Normandy, the great intersection there with great improvements. And so on September 7th, 8th, and 9th, and yes, I know, we're one month ahead, but we want to make sure you put this in your calendar, to be able to come and visit a great tradition. They have food, they have music, they have artisanry, they have all types of goods that you can essentially buy and embrace the Greek history and traditions that's been intertwined with the Latino culture. More than 20,000 people have come from throughout Southern California as an opportunity to have fun and enjoy this great event. But it can't be done alone. It's done with the type of support and effort and incredible passion and tireless ethic that, work ethic that's been demonstrated by Mr. Ted Pastra and Jan Pastras and Potenza, as well as the St. Gennaro family and the whole feast that they bring to this great event. So with that, I'd like to ask them to come to the podium, share a few words, invite you all to this great event. But I also want to introduce Frank and Penny Yokas, who have come to share with you a little taste of what you'll see in terms of authenticity and tradition and dress. And please wave hello to all the folks there out in Los Angeles in the council. And this is, I want to thank them for taking time. And thank Ms. Yokas for sharing this with us. So with that, Ted Pastra.
And I'd like to also, Mr. Smith pressed his button. Nope, by accident. Okay. Please go ahead.
It's Baños. Thanks, Ed. I appreciate it. Very much. I want to thank Ed Reyes and all of the council here for allowing us the opportunity to say hello to you today and to personally invite you to come see the L.A. Greek Fest and to welcome you into the Byzantine Latino Quarter, which is the warm heart of Los Angeles. We've officially recognized and designated the area as such, and we'd like you to come and enjoy it. This is our ninth annual festival. And I want to say with... This is our ninth annual festival, and I want to say with a very strong expression of gratitude, not only to the council, but especially to Ed Reyes, our festival couldn't become the kind of a festival that it has without his help and support, because he's done a tremendous job in getting us all of the assistance and tactical services, et cetera, to really make the fest a great cultural event for the entire neighborhood. We've combined the synergies of the Latino community and the Greek community, and we've made the LA Greek Fest something that the neighborhood is proud of, we're all proud of it, and we hope the city is proud of it. So, we welcome you to come down and join us on September 7th, 8th, and 9th. And in keeping with what Ed was alluding to earlier, because of the synergies we've created in the Byzantine Latino Quarter with the LA Greek Fest, we've been trying to do a lot of outreach to other festivals so that we can make, for example, a Family Festival Month during the month of September, which we're going to be shooting for next year. And we've spoken with a number of the council members, Bernie Parks, for example, and Eric Garcetti, and Mr. Wesson, Tom Labange, and others, about trying to promote a Family Festival Month. And we're going to lay the groundwork with that this year, because we're working very closely and strongly with the San Gennaro Feast, which is the Italian festival at the end of September, which we hope all of you will go to as well. And I'd like to bring Ann Potenza to the mic for a few moments, who's here representing the San Gennaro Feast, so she can say a few words to you.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. This is just an example of being here to support the LA Greek Fest and to be a representative of this Feast of San Gennaro for Family Festival Month. We've had a wonderful, wonderful meeting with everyone that is a part of all the different festivals in September, and this is an example of us supporting each other to start this year and to continue in the years ahead. Thank you very much.
So with that, I'd like to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Parks, who one day came up and said, "Councilman Reyes, you know that this is happening here and this is happening over there? Why don't we just put it under the banner of a Family Festival?" I said, "No, Bernard, that's a great idea." So I want to thank you for that and the cooperation.
And he'd like to add a few words to this.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes, thank you for bringing Ted in the group here from the Greek Fest. In fact, many of you have not gone to that event. It is an outstanding event. In fact, I'll give the secret. It was one year I went there, had so much fun, I actually was dancing in the courtyard with Father Bacca's. Very short dance, no pictures. But it is a fun time, and this Family Festival idea is so unique in dealing with bringing together where each community, as we've been talking about, communities supporting each other, to go and attend and find out about the culture, the communities in different areas. And we mentioned also that Herb Wesson and I are part of the Taste of Soul, that's probably going to be 35,000 to 50,000 people on Crenshaw Boulevard in October, is an ideal kind of Family Festival, and also the African marketplace is getting ready to kick off in August. So, these are the kinds of things that we'd like to expose in our community and certainly find a way to advertise them so that our community could end up going to the Greek Fest and to the Hollywood and all the things that are going on. And people can't be better off by understanding other communities. So I just will tell you, I'll be there this year, and so we can certainly carry on. And Bobby Parks says hello, and she'll also be there.
Hi, all the council members. Should you have some great festival traditions in your district, this is a time where we can celebrate it, announce it, and let the whole world know what a great city Los Angeles is. And with that, I'd like to present this resolution to the Pastras and essentially let them know that we truly appreciate all your hard work, your dedication, not only to the neighborhood, but to the city, if not the region, and having the Ali-Greek Festival, passport to Grecian holiday. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Oh.
I just wanted to say one quick thing. I hope all the council members, please take advantage of the little gift bags that we brought that are on your desk. I see Councilman Wesson is already enjoying the Fest water that's in there. And there's a couple of great posters, some postcards for you to give to your people in your offices, and we hope that you'll post things up and you'll pass the word on to your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. I'd like to acknowledge our next presenter, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President and members. Today I have two presentations. What is my favorite? Where's Princess at?
Here's Princess.
Today is my happy day, is Friday, is Pet Adoption Friday. And I have a lovely terrier named Princess, who's four, five years old. She is a terrier mix, just a very calm, great dog, looking for a home. If anybody is interested in Princess, please give us a call at 888-452-7381. See Princess, you're on television. Smile, you're on Candid Camera. Anyway, I always say this, if you're looking for unconditional love, trust me, these animals will love you on good days and bad days. I do think that it's appropriate that I should say this also, since Mr. Parks is here today. Mr. Parks, this dog came from the shelter in my district, even though last week you and Mr. Boakes thought the shelter was in your district. I thought that I went to bed and my district had been gerrymandered in my sleep. You know how those former police chiefs are. But anyway, if anybody is looking for a companion, Princess is available. She has her shots, she's ready to go. Again, the phone number is 888-452-7381. She is ready to go. Look at that face, somebody.
I know. I'm almost there, Herb. I'm almost there. I have to ask my husband. But Mr. Cardness and Mr. Parks actually would like to say something, because they may beat me to it. Mr. Cardness and then Mr. Parks.
Councilman Alarcon and I were looking on the screen, and we saw the dog in the screen. He said, "That dog is beautiful," but on the TV screen, she don't look that pretty. I just want to tell the people, it's a gorgeous, beautiful dog. Trust us on that. We're seeing her live, but on the screen, for some reason, she looks different. So, and nothing to say about the presenter, nothing about just the dog, okay?
I think whatever was unattractive must have been the camera accidentally came on me, so that, because this is a drop-dead gorgeous dog, who's nervous if, Madam President, I heard you accurately and you said that Mr. Parks...
I would just like to say, many of us had doubts Friday, but this is the first success story of the Pitbull Academy. Winning as a pit bull came out as a Princess, so I'm going to support it now.
So again, please, and remember, at the city of Los Angeles, we have a 100% adoption rate. Let's please keep that rate going. We are in competition with the County of Los Angeles. And again, Princess is looking for a home. Call 888-452-7381. And if you call and Princess is already gone, don't be discouraged, because we have hundreds of companion animals in our sick shelters. Madam President, thank you.
I think she's very photogenic. Thank you very much. I know you have a second presentation, Mr. Wesson.
Again, thank you. Thank you, Madam President and members. I am extremely proud to be here today with a group of men who have made a commitment to try to turn their lives around and make this city a better city for all. Almost two years ago, I started a program called Project Save, and we are gang prevention and gang intervention programs, primarily that work in the district that I represent. And they help us with the Safe Passage Program. They program with the police. We try to get young kids off the street. We try to train them. I mean, I could go on and on and on about the wonderful things that this program does. But a thing that we also felt, that it does take a healthy mind, but it takes a healthy body as well, so we created an athletic component to this program. And the individuals that are here today are part of the Project Save's first annual flag football team competition. And everyone's receiving a certificate, but also today, I want to produce or introduce to you the champions of our first league. I really would like every councilperson to urge the gang prevention and intervention programs in your district to participate. I really, before I go on, I have to thank Ms. Han very much, because two of the teams in our program came from your district, and it helped make our league a better league. I also want to thank Ms. Perry, who had a team in our league. So just to quickly let you know who participated, we had Aztec Rising, and the coach was Leandre Brown. With us today and from Councilmember Perry's district is Coach Leon Galette, who was the Team Pueblo de Rio, also from Han's district, we had the Team Watts Gang Task Force with Donnie Jubert. Then we had a team from Bo Taylor's Group, which was Unity One, combined with Second Call, Sidewalk University, and Baldwin Village with Coach Calico Wilson. And also, the champions of the league are my Greek brothers, or no, my Greek cousins, the brothers from Omega Psi Phi. But I'd like to just have, before I present the champions with this resolution, I'd like to ask Skip, is Skip here?
Yeah.
Skip, why don't you come up and say a few words, and then Kenny. Skip?
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Herb Wesson for having the vision to do something like this for the community, also Ms. Han and Councilperson Perry as well. When it began, it began as a diverse group, and just in the conception stages, thinking of the diversity that's coming to the community, not only with the different ethnic diversity, but the background as far as the past, the organizations that normally didn't sit at the same table together because of the differences. And it wasn't so much about the destination as we thought about actually playing and who's going to win, but it was more so about the experience, and it was the journey that took us there that I'm going to remember the most, so I want to thank the councilmen for that opportunity.
Thank you, Bernard.
Thank you. And Mr. Wesson, before we... Ms. Han would like to say a few words as well, before you go to the next presenter. Ms. Han?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, let's say...
First of all, I'd like to really, really thank Herb Wesson here. He did something on the cutting edge and got together people from all over the city to do something that was very historical, bringing in gang members at risk and everything else to come play football down at Rancho Cienega. And Kamani Black, you know, especially our team, we really love that brother right there. You know, he did us justice. Janice, we would have won that for you. We're going to have a trophy for you next year, okay? Our Wilmington crew. But anyways, it was great, you know, having that message of peace, starting from Rancho Cienega Park and then bringing it back to our neighborhoods and the community, from really gang members, you know? And we really, really thank this really historical event. And we hear there's other things going on, like softball and basketball and, you know, with the community. The community really, really, really appreciates this, and I'm going to bring that trophy home to you, Janice.
Well, I just want everybody to know that we did have members, former gang members from throughout the city that came to my district on Saturdays. We did not have one incident, and there was never need for us to call the police. The police were out on the street doing their job. There was not one incident. And we are going to do softball and basketball, and also some members of Project Save are going to go with me Wednesday night. This Wednesday night, we're going to sleep in a park in my district, and then the next morning at 5:00 AM, we're taking 75 kids who have never even been to the ocean on a half-day fishing boat out in the ocean. So these are members from Project Save. We're going to have a good time. And Mr. Parks, I will have somebody there videoing it, so if I throw up, I'm sure you want to see the coverage of the, "I'm not a good fisherman." With that, I'd like to present the resolution to Omega Psi Phi and Rob Edison, who's representing Mr. Parker. Rob, where are you?
Here.
Here you are. Let's take a moment. Okay, champ.
Good morning. Just want to say thank you on behalf of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. We thank you for this opportunity to compete and to meet these great young gentlemen that are standing behind me right now. It's not about us, it's not about us winning, it's about us coming out, interacting, and getting to meet some new people. Thank you, and on behalf of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity, we'd like to present Councilman Wesson with a small gift. On behalf of the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, we'd like to present Councilman Wesson with the paddles and the pendants of our appreciation.
Thank you.
No, on the back has a little African problem.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I wish you would have given this to me when my children were younger.
I was going to use that for...
I think this would have worked. Thank you all. Thank you.
Before that, Ms. Han.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Well, thank you, Madam President. And Councilmember Wesson, I just wanted to obviously listen to the whole presentation, and I just really wanted to rise and say, "What a great idea, Herb." And as you know, I think we're all finally getting on the same page in terms of, you know, giving kids a positive outlet for their energy and their time. And we can't just keep telling our young people to, you know, stay out of gangs and don't use drugs, and we got to give them something positive. We have to give them our time, we have to give them our energy, we have to fund these kinds of programs, because this is what makes a difference in our neighborhood. And I'll tell you, I'm so proud of Mike and Kenny and Donnie, and I think I saw Hank back there and Mark. You know, these men, it's so amazing to me that they have yet a little more time, a little more energy, a little more love, a little more compassion to be involved in this athletic program, because I will tell you, these men give so much of their time in my community with Safe Passage, with intervention work, with working with the young people, with coming to my Watts Gang Task Force meeting every Monday to talk about how we can improve our community, working with the Housing Authority, on-call all the time, in the middle of the night, on the weekends, if there's ever any trouble. It's these men who are called from their homes, their families, their own life, to give back yet more to their community. So to see these guys involved in yet another program, helping our young people, it makes me realize that there are some heroes amongst us. And those men, in my opinion, are those, and all the rest of you, who are taking your time away again from your own families, your own lives, to give back to the community and believe, like I do, that we can grow up a generation of young people who will not join gangs, who will not get into trouble, but have a chance to become everything they want to be. So you are doing the work out there, and hats off, but I want the trophy next year. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And again, I want any of the other council people, next season, please, you know, have your intervention teams contact us. We'd love to expand the program. And Janice, you need to come so you could see Kenny play, literally chase people half his age out there. his age out there and every now and then catches them. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weston. Sounds like a great program and thank you, Ms. Hahn. Madam Clerk? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Cardenas has for introduction.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Before we go into our next order of business, I'd like to bring Valerie Carranza up to stand next to me. She's an intern. She's part of the prestigious Posse Program and they have an internship program. And I've been blessed to have her in my office for the last few weeks and she's done a tremendous job. She stepped up to the plate, we gave her all kinds of responsibilities, and she did such a fine job that amongst her colleagues, she was awarded a $1,000 scholarship last night of all of her colleagues. Because we were able to tell them truthfully that she was a tremendous asset and she did a wonderful job for our office. And when she got a chance to explain that to them as well, they were definitely in agreement that amongst her colleagues, she stood out as the best this summer in doing a great job and learning from her experience. She's currently a junior at Dickinson College where she'll be majoring in International Studies, Latin American Studies, and English. And I'm sure she could take on more, but I think that's more than I would ever want to take on. So thank you very much, Valerie, for all your fine work. Also, Leo Uyoah, please come up, Leo. Leo is a summer intern for me this year and he did a great job as well. He witnessed Valerie last night get her $1,000 scholarship. He didn't get one himself. He's not part of the Posse Program, but he was there last, he is? I'm sorry, I thought you were. Okay, I thought you were, but somebody told me, okay. He didn't apply for the scholarship. See, you could have split it, 500, 500, but you didn't apply. Seek and you shall find, he didn't seek, Valerie did, she got $1,000. But he did equally a great job for us and he did a tremendous work for us this summer. We've been very pleased with him as well as Valerie. And he'll return to Claremont McKenna as a sophomore, majoring in economics and government, and eventually would like to attend law school. So Leo, thank you very much for all your fine work. And may you do well and please apply for us next year. Okay? We'd love to have you back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Thank you for acknowledging them, they're a great part of our city. And we all have had interns that have worked so well. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alec, Hahn, Cardenas, Grill, Hahn, Weesar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti. Eleven members present and accorred, Madam President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval in the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves, Mr. Reyes seconds.
Next item is commensary resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
Madam President, would you like to go through public comments?
We'll go through the agenda first and then we will go to public comment.
Okay, at this time, there are several requests to consider. There are requests to continue item number 12 to October 31st.
Unless there's any objection, that will be continued to the 31st of October.
There's also a request to continue item 13 to September 11th.
Unless there's objection, that will be continued to the 11th.
There is a quest to continue item 58 to August 14th.
Objection, that will be continued to August 14th.
And the final request is to continue item 64 to August 15th.
That objection, August 15th, that item will be continued.
Next are items number 1 through 13, with the exception of 12 and 13 are items known as for public hearings. Items number 1 through 11 are street lighting ordinances. There might be 12 members, would you like to hold that?
Actually, I see that we only will have 11 today.
Okay. Would you like to vote on that?
Yes. Colleagues, any specials, 1 through 11? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
If one of our members does add them, we will reconsider that item and vote on it again. Thank you. Next item.
Next are items 14 through 49, and those are items for which public hearings have been held. Item number 14 is a ballot tabulation and ordinance to renew a business improvement district. The ballot results are 86.69% are in favor and 13.31% oppose. With the majority support, the recommended action for council is to adopt the ordinance.
Thank you. Any specials, colleagues, between 14 and 49? Again, public hearings have been held on these items. Mr. Parks?
Can we hold 16 till Tuesday? I just, we're doing some research on that number of years on that contract.
Okay, item 16 will be continued to Tuesday. Colleagues, any other specials?
Excuse me, Madam President.
Mr. City Attorney.
Item number 15, there are some typographical errors and we have a corrected ordinance. Can we, can you call that special so that we can distribute it?
We will call item 15 special.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Hahn?
Yes, I need to continue 43 and 44 for 30 days.
43 and 44, 30 days?
Yes, because law staff was unable to be here.
Okay, thank you. 45, I think there are some technical amendments as well. It just, it should be 25,000 per the DOT, not 15,000. So that will be before us as amended. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you, those items have been approved. Next items.
Next are items number 50 through 67, with the exception of 58 and 64. Those are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration and there are some requests. There is a request to receive and file 60s and there's also a request to refer item number 57 back to Budget and Finance.
Okay. Any other specials, colleagues? We do have cards on item 60 and 64. Mr., Ms. Hahn? Oh, you want 64? Okay.
62 special.
Any other specials, colleagues?
62.
Yes, I have that, 62, Mr. Parks. Any other specials? If not, Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll and the remaining items, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you, those items will be approved. Next item.
Next are items number 68 through 71. They are closed session items, would you like to hold these on the desk?
We will hold those on the desk.
Next is a special meeting. And I will read the roll. Alec, Hahn, Cardenas, Weesar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti. Eleven members present and accorred, Madam President.
Thank you. First order of business.
First order of business is items number 72 through 76 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Thank you. Anyone like to call any of those items special, 72 through 76? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Those items are approved.
Madam President, just want to announce that since there are ordinances today and there are not 12 members, they will be carried over for one week.
Thank you. And as mentioned, if we do receive, one of our colleagues does arrive, we will reconsider those items for 12 members. Next item.
Next are items called special, or you could do public comment.
We'll do public comment at this time. Like to, Juan Jimenez, as well as, I think it's Grant McLean.
One, two, okay. My name is Juan Jimenez. Good morning, Honorable Chairperson of the City Council. I come before you to ask you how we can obtain a motion to have our neighborhood event that benefits our children and their family members. Our City Councilman Jose Weesar's office refuses to soften their heart in understanding about my wrongful doing for not following his motion back in 2006, which was against my neighbors that signed the petition only because we came to an agreement not to block off our neighbors' driveways anymore, but work it out in a way that we could all live in harmony. I honored the people's petition, not the motion made against the people's petition because the motion was made due to one person's or one businessman's request to our councilman. We have turned our neighbors, it would have turned our neighbors against me and also towards the organization. Honorable Chairperson, if I have done wrong to have hardened our honorable councilman Jose Weesar's heart against me or to the organization, then I ask before you all that he forgive me for making him feel uneasy and let us start anew as of today onward to help and work together to put our house in order, in God's name, who is our Lord. This event has been a very peaceful one in the past six years without one incident in the middle of a community that has so much violence. Imagine one ear of peace and people coming together to enjoy an event in peace and laughter together as we should all live like. I thank you for this moment and hope that we can get a motion because next week is the date of the event that's coming here and he's more than welcome to come. We invited him last year, he didn't show, so I'm hoping that he could understand and soften his heart. I have nothing against him whatsoever, even though we ran against each other, I respect that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Grant, is it Grant McLean?
Good afternoon. I will try to say in English and in Spanish why my heart is bleeding. I am 82 years old woman, I born January 14, 1925. I have been a volunteer in our lovely Los Angeles. I was the founder even of the Spanish television with a cubano que me ayudó. Por los seis años pasados, we have been having the fair in Boyle Heights. Yo soy la speaker del cuadrante número dos, the neighborhood council of Boyle Heights. Mi interés son los niños y los ancianos porque son pobres en Boyle Heights. And Boyle Heights is el corazón de Los Angeles. Boyle Heights is the heart of the city of Los Angeles. I never get any problem getting the permission for that event for the poor people of Boyle Heights, which deserve to have free entertainment. I knocked the door on my councilman district, señor Weesar, I knocked 20 doors difference. And I don't understand why these Spanish people that live in Boyle Heights cannot have their feria. Do you please, señores del councilman, pueden explicarle a María Lane, la gran malane, que voluntaria es servido en operación yes. He sido la fundadora de Nurses of Well Best. He sido la fundadora de educación realistica y de narconon, la droga, en contra de la droga y el alcoholismo. He gastado mi dinero que he hecho para servirle a la comunidad.
Can you please tell María Lane that I've been a volunteer for a long time and been the founder of many organizations?
I want to know why the community of Boyle Heights don't deserve to have esta feria. En el nombre del niño de Atoche, en el nombre de Dios, pido para los niños y los ancianos de Boyle Heights como representantes del cuadrante número dos.
In the name of God and in the children of Boyle Heights and as ever, square number two of Boyle Heights, I ask you for your permission. We need the permits so we can have this festivity for the children and the families. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Weesar.
Reference to the two previous speakers, I just want to state for the record that the Bureau of Street Services is opposed to granting a special events motion for this carnival. In fact, last year, for reasons that last year, they went beyond that area allocated to them per the motion and they failed to clean up as required after their carnival. Secondly, the LAPD is opposed to granting of a special events motion. They feel that weekend, they will be, their resources will be dispersed throughout their jurisdiction. And finally, the MTA Department of Transportation is opposed to granting of this motion because of the block issues and bus routes that are necessary that weekend. So I just want to state that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weesar. We could go out to the San Fernando Valley to Sharon Brewer.
Thank you. Sharon Brewer, Encino Neighborhood Council, June 28, 2007, nine election challenges update. Friday, August 3, 2007, I emailed Gary De La Rosa, Human Relations Commission, who will decide about ENC's election challenges, asking about the 30-day timeframe given him to come to a decision about each challenge. Wednesday, August 8, I resent my August 3 email and again asked for the information regarding the 30-day timeframe. I believe the 30 days were up on August 6. I also asked if he had received the ENC letter in response to the challenges and if I could get a copy of this letter. Gary De La Rosa has still not responded or even acknowledged receipt of either email. I submitted five challenges to the ENC election and should be kept up to date by either Gary De La Rosa or someone at Dunn regarding the status of all nine challenges. Again, another city department, Human Relations Commission, ignoring emails sent to them asking pertinent questions. One of my challenges had to do with ENC's outreach regarding the June 28 election to the stakeholders and the facts are that there were 271 ballots cast, there are over 44,000 residents. In Area 1, there were seven ballots cast and there's 6,687 residents. In Area 2, there were 39 cast and there's 5691. In Area 3, there were seven ballots cast and there's 8,747 residents. Area 5, 37 cast and there's 5,869. And Area 6, 46 cast and there's 5,896 residents there. Obviously, there wasn't outreach done for this election and again, that's one of my challenges. The other thing is, I put in a card for 64, it's gotten continued to 815, so that's okay about not talking on 64. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brewer. That was our last public speaker card. First item, Madam.
First item is item number...
15, I believe, by the city attorney.
15, and that was called special?
Mr. City Attorney.
Actually, that's still being distributed right now.
Okay, we will hold off on that.
Thank you.
Next item.
Next, okay, is item 60, and that was called special by cards from the public?
Yes, Ms. Brewer, out in our San Fernando Valley, called item number 60 special.
I'm getting a workout today. Yes, special event fee waivers. And on today's whole agenda, there are 26 total, 20 with amounts totaling $108,122. There are four reimbursed and two no amount submitted. The total so far for the August, I ended up leaving the paper, is almost $300,000 just with four days. The total for July was $276,250. So you're now, in just two months, or not even two months, almost half a million dollars worth of fee waivers. The other thing is, there's one fee waiver that it ends up being, oh, there it is. Sorry. It's item U and for $26,870, the sponsor is Caldwell Banker. They expect 40,000 people and it's a food tasting from restaurants, live auction and entertainment. And they only ask for DOT. I can't imagine that with that amount of people that they wouldn't also have to have the fire department and the police. And I don't understand why Caldwell Banker has to ask for a fee waiver and they probably end up selling booths. And again, you've got in less than two months, over $500,000 worth of fee waivers. We need to take and start looking into these more carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Item 60 is now before us. Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. I do see we have 12 members present and if we could reconsider those items that were ordinances that require 12 members, if you could just know which ones those were.
Those items would be items 1 through 11, 14, 17, 50 through 52, 72, and 73.
Thank you. Colleagues, we will reconsider those items. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. We will now have those items before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Those items will be approved. Thank you. Next item?
Uh, next is item number sixty-two, and that was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, item sixty-two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to ask public support on a reward motion dealing with a homicide that occurred on November 8th, 2006 at 5:00 PM. A nineteen-year-old young man in the Eighth District, Jose Romero Garcia, was fatally shot in front of 2929 Palm Grove Avenue in the Eighth District. We'd ask that the, anyone that has information regarding this incident would call Detective Moon at Seventy-Seventh Homicide at (213) 485-1383, and this is a renewal of a reward from a previous council action. We'd also ask to, a verbal amendment because the new ordinance that extends rewards to six months goes into effect tomorrow, but I'd like to alter this and say make this effective August the 11th, '07, and change from sixty days to six months.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next is item number fifteen, and that was called special by the city attorney.
I think they're distributing the document as we speak on the ordinance. So, Madam Clerk, if you want to open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
You recently circulated?
It's been circulated, yes, fifteen A.
Okay, good, thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item? No, we had called special item number sixty-four, even though it's being continued to the fifteenth.
Item sixty-four was continued to August 15th.
But we also called it special?
Um, there were cards on there.
Yes, and Ms. Hahn also called it special.
So have you deferred?
I had it special, Ms. Hahn, so, on my little note, but anyway, so, we didn't approve it. I think our next item is sixty-four. We do have, Sharon Brewer, I don't know if she's still out in the Valley Office. I know she heard that we were going to continue it to the fifteenth and said she didn't need to speak, but if she's interested in speaking, she can do so now. Ms. Brewer, yes, it is going to be continued fifteenth, but Ms. Hahn also wanted to hear it today. If you'd like to speak today, you can, or you can wait till the fifteenth.
If I can wait until the fifteenth, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Ms. Hahn?
I just wanted, I wanted to clarify to everybody that this was, uh, the request that I made regarding LAPD's involvement with the DEA raids on our medical marijuana facilities. I've learned recently, that, just this morning, that more of these facilities were raided by the DEA yesterday. So I just wanted to bring LAPD in here. I was hoping the chief would come, but I understand he's going to send someone to talk about LAPD's involvement with these raids, with their crowd control, what their protocol is, and just a sense of what they're doing, what their involvement is, and then an opportunity for us to just ask some questions and maybe get some clarification on how they see their role in these raids. The reason I wanted to call it special was because I want people to know that LAPD is sending someone next Wednesday, the fifteenth. It won't be the chief, but it will be someone else who will be here, so I think it's an opportunity for us to just clarify how our, in my opinion, again, very thin law enforcement resources are being used in this way, and I think that's right for us to do. So just wanted to call it special to let people know it's going to be next Wednesday. We're going to have an opportunity to just have some dialogue with LAPD about their role in these DEA raids.
Thank you. Mr. Race?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to thank Councilmember Hahn for bringing this to light. But I did want to ask the city attorney, because I'm a little, little confused. We have, we have a federal law that says they shouldn't exist. We have a state law, I believe, or the state passed it, and here we are in municipality. So could we pose the question to the LAPD, or maybe it's a legal interpretation, I'm not sure, but maybe we can give them this question, whose law are we following? What is our directive as a municipality so that when they come here, they have a way to respond as opposed to saying to us, well, we'll get back to you, we're not sure? But is that something that would come from the city attorney, or is that something that comes from the LAPD?
You know what? I think that sounds like a motion to me, that we also ask the city attorney to be present next Wednesday as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will notify the appropriate attorney. She was going to be here today, but I'd already told her that the matter was continued to next Wednesday, so we will be available next Wednesday to entertain those questions.
Right. I think we get their official opinion at that time.
I mean, just to understand what grounds we're standing on, what are options. We have heard of the medical issue and what it does for those who are in need from a medical point of view, and then we've heard from the other side, and I've heard it from the public safety point of view, that some of these establishments are but fronts for some of the underground elements, the gang elements, that take advantage of these laws for purposes that hurt our community. So it's a tough place to be in, especially when you see people who are in their twilight moments and need this to be able to survive. So for me, it's a very tough situation, but I'd like to understand the legal parameters of this and how we stand as a municipality in light of these seemingly conflicting laws.
Good.
So we would have the city attorney here then to answer that?
Yes, I think that's right.
We'll have the city attorney here.
Thank you, Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you. Mr. Weisar and Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Ms. Hahn, for bringing this forward. You know, I'm very interested in hearing LAPD's role in this, but I'm coming at it from a quite different angle. I'd like to hear how they decide to work with the DEA on what particular focus, because we have a meth epidemic in our streets. They're taking young people's lives, people getting addicted at a rate we had never seen before, and I'd be very interested to see how they decide whether they go against these dispensaries or whether they go and put more resources into taking care of these meth labs and supporting the DEA and focusing on the meth labs. So this is a very good discussion. I hope it gets into something much larger, because I actually put in a motion a few months ago, asking just that very question. What is the LAPD doing to help the DEA in dealing with the meth crisis in our streets? And this is related, because if we're going to put resources into these types of DEA activities in the city of Los Angeles, let's look at the real, the most horrendous problems in our streets in terms of drug use and see if we could attack those more square head-on. So thank you, Ms. Hahn, for bringing this. I think this is good.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Labonge and then Mr. Alakon.
Well, it's going to be an interesting discussion next week, and I want to thank Janice Hahn for her leadership in putting this before everybody. Everybody's comments so far cover the various angles of it. Obviously, the federal law and the state law is where the rubber hits the road in the conflicting situation, and it'll be good to understand why our government is cooperating, the local government, with the federal government. We do have states' rights in our constitution that suggest certain other things. And then on the broader subject of drugs, look, you've heard my scream more than once on this issue. We have 2.3 million people in prison, 25% of the world's incarceration, we're less than 5% of the world's population when you add up the incarceration. It just makes no sense. Those discussions frankly have to be held on the federal level. There are members of the House of Representatives that have shown some leadership. Dennis Kucinich has been more than clear on this, he's presidential candidate and even brings it to the light. But it'll be a healthy dialogue next week. I don't know what we can resolve or not resolve, but it's good for us to talk about it, because these are our constituents, these are our people that are being impacted by it. Our jails are filled, and now all they want to do in Sacramento is build more prisons, take money away from transportation, take money away from this and that, build more prisons, which is total insanity on that subject. I look forward to the initial discussion. Thank you, Janice Hahn, for that.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge?
Thank you very much. And Mr. City Attorney, can you explain to me how this works? If the federal government is doing something and we are...
I don't know. Is it going to be heard on Tuesday?
Yeah, this will be discussed next Wednesday, but we have the attorney present who could give you a coming attraction of what the discussion will be about.
Let's see if we want to have triple trailers on the freeway, and the state says, or the federal government says you only can have double trailers. You know, how does it work there? Because I understand what you're saying, and this is an important discussion, but I also believe the federal government has a role. The federal government comes into a city, the federal government tells the city what they should and shouldn't do. The Supreme Court has ruled on this. But just give me a little help here. Come on in here now.
Madam City Attorney?
Good morning. Heather Aubrey, Deputy City Attorney. As you're aware, there is a conflict between federal and state law, and it is as yet unresolved, and that's essentially where we are on the issue.
Okay. Can I ask, I'd love to Dr. Fielding from the county to come. I would like to see, and I'm for helping Mr. Rosendahl people, okay? I'm for helping people, but also, I also want to make sure that someone from what we have a health service in the county that says, yes, these are important, or these are not as important to that. So could we invite the county health officer to this? Because it's about health. Anyone interested in health?
Well, if, again, I think Ms. Hahn or the request, we can ask the county health department to be here, if we'd like to do that. Maybe Mr. Labonge and Ms. Hahn can figure out who that appropriate person would be.
Well, the director of the county health department. I just think it's important, I mean, I just think it's important to say, we have a situation where people use medical marijuana, is that the term there? Okay? And how do they qualify for it? Who oversees them? Who sees if it's, and I don't know marijuana from, you know, as a situation. Who sees what it is? How do they smoke it? Whatever the case may be. I think it would make sense to me. Maybe I'll do this, Ms. Hahn, since I'm not getting any smile from you. I will do this, I will ask this on Wednesday, but I think it should be discussed, because I know people who've been pained by great severe medical challenges at the time, and I can understand someone's, why that whole discussion came on in California. But at the same time, I hope there's some guidance, because there's some who, there's some reason why all of a sudden there's four medical marijuana clinics in Los Angeles, and now there's well over hundreds in the city.
And I would just add, Councilman, that the state law does address the issues of who does qualify to use medical marijuana, and that issue is addressed somewhat in the state law.
But is there no question, no problem with that? I mean, it's...
But certainly from a federal standpoint, that's very problematic.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Alakon?
Members, again, this is a states' rights versus federal law issue, and historically, Mr. Labonge, historically, if the federal government's law is in conflict with the state's law, they could threaten to pull back funding, for example, in law enforcement and other law enforcement matters. There's a whole bunch of things that the federal government can do. It's not as if they're going to come into City Hall and handcuff the council members for acting against the law, but historically, they have jeopardized funding. I rise because I'm a little concerned about where this discussion is going. We have to recognize and be very clear that we have a law enforcement agency that has a responsibility to enforce the law, and there are many, many investigations, particularly in the drug area, that are going on that we don't need to know about. And it is inappropriate to go beyond the line of just trying to understand what a department is doing in general in cooperation with a federal agency, but I'm concerned that we not get into a discussion about strategy and specific investigations, or even broad investigations, because that could put us in, that could put not only the city in jeopardy, it could put officers who are in undercover operations in jeopardy as well. So I understand the desire to, understand the policy perspective here, but I would ask that we use extreme caution as we proceed so as not to interfere with legitimate, ongoing undercover operations and other strategic elements that I just don't think are the purview of this council, certainly in a public forum. I would also say that I would expect that we have a Public Safety Committee chairperson who is not hindered by the Brown Act to meet with the police department and perhaps learn a little bit more detail than we can discuss in this setting. We should trust our committee systems, we should trust our chairmanships, we should respect that, and I think that an appropriate discussion would be between the police department and the chair of the Public Safety Committee. To bring matters directly to the council floor is, I think, it runs the risk of putting too much information without the opportunity to scrutinize what information should be before us and what information should be held back so as not to jeopardize emergency operations and, as I said, undercover investigations. So with that, I'll vote for the motion, but I think we should be very cautious here.
The motion's up, the motion is, it's going to be heard on Wednesday. This has just been continued to the fifteenth. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Madam President. I was just going to clarify that, that actually, the Chair of Public Safety, Jack Weiss, as well as Councilmember Zine, waived this from their committee and felt it was appropriate to hold this debate in the full city council. And again, these are great, you can just see right now, we all have questions, we all have concerns, and I think, as Councilmember Weisar talked about, let's talk about our priorities with our resources. Let's talk about where we want to put our LAPD resources, and we certainly want to crack down on, you know, illegal drug use, and again, some of these terrible meth labs and some of that criminal activity that is really ruining the quality of life for our neighborhood. So it'll be a great discussion. I'm not sure, I have no intention of jeopardizing, you know, any of their ongoing investigations, but I think it's right and proper that the LAPD, along with the city attorney, come to us and so we can have this discussion. We're in a tough position right now, but I think we need to know what everybody's thinking. I think we need to know what LAPD's thinking is on this, what their strategy is, what their feeling is about how they assist the DEA. So I think it's going to be a proper dialogue with respect to all of our agencies. And then at some point, I would like to, maybe at a later date, talk to the county health director on what this means in terms of people's health. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Labonge?
Thank you very much for agreeing to talk at a later date. I wanted to ask the question there, because you were talking about meth, and I think Mr. Alakon made a very good point. All of a sudden, you have these people at the table, we're talking, and Mr. City Attorney, I hope you're listening to me, we're talking ninety different directions. Can we talk about meth labs based on this motion next week?
I do not think so. It should be just restricted to medical marijuana facilities.
Or is this requesting the connection between the LAPD and the United States Drug Enforcement Agency? So I think there should be some clarification, because I, and then I would welcome any other discussion, but there should be clarification. Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Labonge, if you want to amend the motion to include meth labs, you could do that now, and then it'll be reflected on the agenda next week.
Well, I'm not interested in meth labs. I think it gets confused. I think you got a good point, but you're not doing it.
Mr. Labonge?
I'm okay.
Okay. So that item will be continued to next Wednesday, colleagues. Stay tuned. Next items.
Next is, we have a special item number one, and the city attorney needs to do the findings.
Yes, this is...
Madam Chair, as a point of information or clarification, the motion hasn't even been voted on. How will we be listening to anybody next Wednesday?
The motion instructs them to...
We haven't voted on the motion.
It was waived out of the committee to come to the full council to hear this report.
Okay, I'm not understanding that. The council does not have to vote on the motion before these people are directed to comply with it?
To report to the city council?
Right.
And I'll ask the city attorney to respond to that question.
Normally, that is true, Madam President. The departments will be instructed... The departments will be instructed or requested by a full council vote before they respond. Occasionally, we, as one of the departments can respond while the department is, or while the council is deciding whether to act on the motion.
Ms. Hahn, Mr. Alakon has suggested that we not have the police here until we have voted on this motion, to have them be presented. Would you like us to vote on this motion today, requesting them to be here on Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay. So colleagues, before us at this moment is the motion that asks them to appear on Wednesday. So open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next items.
I'm sorry, just for clarification, will there also be a direction to the clerk's office to place on agenda next Wednesday an item reflecting the council's action today?
Well, however, the city attorney and the city clerk would suggest that it go on to the agenda on Wednesday. The council has voted to, the council has voted to have the police chief or his representative to report on the motion that was introduced and the questions that were raised in that motion. Thank you. Mr. Alakon?
I didn't, I was listening to what he said.
Mr. Alakon?
The reason I stood up was because I assumed that we were going to vote on the motion on Wednesday. I didn't assume that anybody was going to make any presentations unless they were making the presentation related to the motion. But the discussion came up in response to Mr. Labange's question to amend the motion. So the question is whether or not there is an amendment before us to include the discussion about methamphetamine. That's just a point of clarification.
Yeah, Mr. Labange did not further, he suggested that, but did not instruct us to do that. There was no second to that motion.
Let's get through this one.
That's fine.
Okay. But there has been a practice of a motion was introduced, and it has been to have a report back that that has gone before the city council. Next items.
Next is special item number one, and that is a reward motion, and city attorney will be providing findings.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the Los Angeles Police Department has requested that council issue a reward for information regarding the July 20, 2007 fatally incident in which Alex, I'm sorry, Eric Lexing and Scott Grant were fatally shot while sitting in their car at 4,000 block of Steve Lee Avenue. Immediate action is required for the safety of the public on this matter. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Thank you. The findings are before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, Madam President. What I'd like to do is amend that motion, the suggestion from Mr. Parks, that would make it six months in length and effective on August 11.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. That item's been approved. Next items?
Madam President?
Yes.
Could I follow that same lead on item number 62, which is effective 8/11/07? Amend this report on 62. We have to reconsideration?
I believe it's 61 that you're referring to, Mr. Labange.
61?
You'd like to have an amendment to that?
I got it. Yeah, I got it. 61. Forgive me.
Okay. You have an amendment to that. Okay. We need to reconsider item number 61. Open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Next items before us. Mr. Labange?
And thank you, Mr. Wesson, and thank you, Mr. Parks, as we amend this to affect the date of August 11, 2007. Thank you.
And in addition, I believe you're moving to extend the effective date, to amend the effective date period from 60 days to six months.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. That item is now before us as amended. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. That item's been approved as amended. Next items?
Next are closed session items.
Thank you. We will go into closed session. Thank you. We are, the city council is now back in session. Madam Clerk?
Next item is item number 68, and that is a case, settlement of Stephen Burrows versus City of Los Angeles. City Attorney will speak on the settlement.
The city attorney recommends settlement in the sum of $112,000... of one hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars plus life pension in the amount of sixty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars sixty-three cents at the weekly rate of sixty-five dollars and seventy-one cents.
Thank you. Do we need to vote on that item in public session? Okay, Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Next is item number sixty-nine, and that is the case of Willie Carter versus City of Los Angeles. City Attorney will speak on the settlement.
In this matter, City Attorney recommends that the terms and conditions of settlement are as follows. Set aside the administrative appeal decision finding Mr. Carter's performance deficient. Recent his downgrade from P three plus one to P two. Remove references to the administrative appeal decision and downgrade from Officer Carter's personnel file. Provide back pay with interest for the pay differential between P three plus one and P two. An amount to date is fourteen thousand seventy-one dollars thirty-seven cents, and payment of court costs, attorney's fees, and interest in the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Item's approved. Next item?
Next is item number seventy, and that is the case of Stephen Minor versus City of Los Angeles.
The City Attorney's Office recommends a payment in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in settlement of this case.
Thank you, that item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item's approved. Next item?
Next is item number seventy-one, and that is the case of Mark Winchell versus Mike Silver and Andrew Leonard et al. versus City of Los Angeles. City Attorney will speak on the settlement.
Mr. City Attorney?
In these matters, City Attorney's Office recommends settlement in the amount of one million seventy-five thousand dollars.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next are motions for posting a referral.
Those will be posted and referred?
Madam President, we have excuses on the desk.
Please.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on October tenth to leave at twelve noon for city business. This meets city policy.
She will be excused.
Council President Garcetti requests to be excused on September twenty-sixth to leave at twelve noon, and on October third and fifth for city business. This meets city policy.
He will be excused.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
I'm sorry, Madam President, was item number seventy, did that go forthwith? If not, can you request?
We'll ask that it go forthwith, thank you. Mr. City Attorney? Next items?
That clears the desk, Madam President.
Thank you. Colleagues, do we have announcements today? Yes, Ms. Hahn.
Colleagues, I also want to say goodbye to a great intern that I've had here this summer. I didn't know your full name was Pettenella. Pettenella McCosker, we call her Nella. And you might recognize the last name McCosker. Her dad, of course, was my brother's chief of staff, Tim McCosker. So Nella is a political science major, and she's in her sophomore year at Notre Dame, and she lives in San Pedro. Today's her last day, she's going back to school August twenty-first, and she's been with me all summer. I will tell you, you know, there are interns and there are interns. And Nella really came into my office this summer and dove headfirst into the issues that I am really involved in, which is, of course, ending gang violence. And she has been working with me in Tony Carnes' committee, on the ad hoc committee on gang violence. She was one of those, Tony, you'll love this, that actually went through all those programs that we've talked about spending money on in the city that reach at-risk youth, and actually looked at them and saw what they dealt with, and made me my own matrix on whether or not we were really spending our money on programs that work with kids at risk. She has given me great information, she's very organized, and she really was invaluable to me this summer, and I will miss her greatly, and I think it's great that she's studying political science, and I think Nella will go far, and I expect a lot of her. But you've been really a great help to me this summer, and I hope you've enjoyed it as well, so, thank you. Take one more picture where I'm smiling.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Other announcements? Mr. Labonge?
Yeah, thank you, members, I think we all should, and that was very nice for your very special intern there. I think we all should give Janice Hahn a great, great hand for her job in bringing Reggie to the Los Angeles Zoo. Yesterday, we unveil Reggie, and Ms. Hahn and her passion and her team organization. She did a good job, so a big hand, Janice, a great job. Reggie's there at a wonderful place there. Thank you, Janice Hahn.
Reggie will now be a resident of the Fourth District at the L.A. Zoo. I expect you to take good care of him, check on him once a week, will you, Tom?
I will, I will.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jacob. Very good.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to announce a number of events in the Eighth District. Our Lula Washington Dance Theater will be having one of their professional development showcases on Saturday, August the eleventh, seven p.m., at their studio at thirty-seven hundred block of Crenshaw. Also, SCLC located in the Eighth District will have their annual fundraiser to raise funds for their dispute center, resolution center, their Rosa Parks Sexual Assault Center, and their Hate Crime Center, and it will be a black fashion designer show highlighting black fashion designers at the LAX Radisson, Saturday, August the eleventh, at eight p.m. Also, the, let's see, the A-Man Incorporated, which is one of our local science and discovery organizations, is having a program on August the eleventh, ten to twelve, at their center at Hunt One Oh One, South La Brea in Inglewood. Also, in LeMert Park, the World Jazz, World Stage Jazz, along with the L.A. Commons, UCLA, and Community Bill are hosting a jazz program on August the twelfth, ten thirty to seven p.m. at the Forty-third and Degnan in LeMert Park. And then on August the fifteenth, there'll be a project status update, open house on the Expo Line at the USC Galen Center between six thirty p.m. and eight thirty p.m.
Any other announcements? Yes, Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise and invite everyone to the MacArthur Park rebuilt band shell. From Wednesdays through Sundays, we'll have free programs, music, art shows, starting at seven thirty, and on Sundays at six thirty. I want to thank the community, the Levitt Foundation, the CRA, Wreckin' Parks, and all the great people that put this together, that allowed us to bring back the band shell that's been shut down for years and years, and now we're adding one more beautiful jewel to MacArthur Park. So come, everyone, to enjoy the great band shell this evening at seven thirty.
Congratulations, Ed, that is just amazing, really. Bill, Rosendahl.
He is an amazing guy.
He is an amazing guy.
Yep, yep, I think Ed Reyes is a blessing to everybody.
Before, Mr. Labonge wants to add something, I think.
I just want to add that, Ed, what you're doing at MacArthur Park, what you're doing with that band shell, it's making a place for all people, and I want to congratulate you, I hope find time to go over. It's just fantastic what's happening, thank you.
Yep, and it's certainly great to have him as a seatmate, you know, so we can always talk these things through. But, Madam President, on Saturday, in Oakwood Park, which is in the heart of Venice, we're having a barbecue, and we're gonna have five hundred to a thousand people, I'm gonna be judging some of the food, so I urge people in Venice to come over to Oakwood Park around noon to about four on Saturday, and enjoy yourself, have a great time, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. For the third in our series of movies in the park this week, in Wen Ecker Park on Saturday night, we're gonna have the original Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory with Gene Wilder, the good one. We're giving out Wonka bars to the kids, and the, as always, we have the In-N-Out Burger van there, and all proceeds go to the Boys and Girls Club of the West San Fernando Valley. So anybody who wants a nice night in the park, it's free, it's a lovely atmosphere, come out and enjoy the great movie Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory, bring your kids, bring your blankets, enjoy.
And what time is that on Sunday?
Eight o'clock, it's Saturday.
Saturday night?
Saturday night. The movie's at eight, the food service begins at six thirty for those that want to purchase hamburgers from In-N-Out, or bring your own, either way.
None are as good as In-N-Out. Any, Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, Madam President and members. Earlier today, I referenced that we're going to do on Wednesday a sleepover in the district, and that the following morning, we're gonna take seventy-five kids ocean fishing on a half-day boat. And so I'm looking for five experienced city employees that are deep-sea fisher people that might want to volunteer their time and go out on this boat with us Thursday morning and help us with the kids where it relates to changing the tackle and putting on bait and things of that nature. So if there are five experienced fisher men or women that would like to have a good time, plus spend some quality time with some great young children on what I'm sure is gonna be a life-changing experience, please call my office, and you're welcome to join us this Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Do we have adjourning motions? Any adjourning motions? Yes, please, okay, if everyone could please rise. If everyone could please rise? Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, Madam President. Members, earlier today, you supported me, and I'm very appreciative, on a reward motion for fifty thousand dollars, and I'd like to adjourn in the memory of these two young men that were killed. Scott Grant was forty years old. He was a security officer with the Inglewood Unified School District, and he was hanging out with his good friend Eric Lexing, who was twenty-six years old, on the street, Fort Thousand Block of Steely. In fact, that's the street I lived on when my oldest son was born. Two suspects got out of a car, fired on both of them, killing them instantly. Eric Lexing, I mean, and this is just terrible. This young man had recently received a bachelor's degree in Spanish, and he was in grad, about to finish grad school in criminal justice. He was preparing to become a Border Patrol agent when these murderers came and took his life and Mr. Grant's life. So I ask that, and it's just a few days ago, we had another young man in our district in the same area, Michael Presley, who was killed, and he was at Cal State Northridge studying criminal justice as well. So these murderers are getting our good ones before they can even put on a uniform. So I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Scott Grant and Eric Lexing.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Any other adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.